Ages.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Long. It's working progress. Um, obvious action.
Yeah, I was gonna say that would be the big.
And then this just gets. It's based for the whole of the cost. So it's five sixteen minus. That was basically. And I got to ask. Use on an interim basis. That'll be get reimbursed. It's enclosed in early. Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Construction bid day. Close date. So all of at that time.
Your bid.
We were at the end of the year. First part of the year. Yeah.
Have you been able to block any?
Not at all, no. So we we won't do that until we have a public hearing. So.
They are projected.
They are.
So they make an action. The increase?
Nope. That's that's close when we run.
But it's up to seven, is that safe?
Uh, no, it won't go that high. Can't guarantee that, but it's um.
Yeah.
Did Ash talk about?
That caught my attention.
Did Ash talk to you about the? Site one project?
Doesn't matter just then.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry, just bring it up. We need another hundred thousand. I think it's.
Is that out in this area? That's. It's yeah, it's narcissistic and out to the school. Basically, certainly.
From the school.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Another hundred thousand, because it was never.
The grant was. Grant was eighty percent match.
Call this meeting in order to see the council tenant agenda Monday, July eight, two thousand twenty-two. Six hundred degree on council change. Call to order. Patrick.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Calvo. Here. Renslow.
Here.
Agenda approval consent, agenda approval minutes of six thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, and special joint meeting of six twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. Approval of financial statements, files of six thirty, two thousand twenty-two, approval of bills presented, approval of liquor license after judge. Calvo, C. Approval of liquor license. Two children. Whatever that is. Oh, three, not four. Approval of liquor license, Johnny's happen.
Hello.
My Renslow.
One second.
My Dolly. Are you up? Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Okay. Four. Somebody from P and Z gonna talk about this management? Is she here, the lady?
She is not, no.
You wanna talk?
You wanna talk about it?
Sure.
That's fine.
Jason had recommended that we do a training session, not just for P and Z, but for city council, office staff, board of adjustments, and P and Z.
Right.
Marquita is came highly recommended. She's an Edes professor at great. She teaches city government. She's been, she, I believe it, correct me if I'm wrong, Ash. She is the city manager, Bond Durant still.
I can look still, but I guess.
Yeah. She was the president of the state organization of city administrators. Um, so she will be here Wednesday, July twentieth, five to eight, a working meeting. We will have a light supper, and we encourage all of you to come and join us. It will be here and.
Yes, she's been around and she's been doing that for a long time. I think it's great opportunity for our planning as all year, city council, everybody wanna attend. Uh, for surprise, I think it's worth it. The council's working with the motion, and it's always invitation to everybody. As a council member, planning, or the adjustment, uh, city employees, it's great to watch you.
And if you could let Nadine know by the end of the week that we have a count for dinner, that would be great.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Michael Patrick, Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan. Calvo.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Okay, you're planning the building, the alley on rezoning. Okay. You gotta talk, talk.
Do you want me to go first?
You go ahead, talk. Thank you.
Good evening. I've come here representing the P and Z, and I was asked to talk in regards to this issue at hand. Uh, it brought to our attention that Doug Galliano property, which is just north of the Landis building, uh, has, he found out that the land has been zoned light industrial, all the lots from north of the Landis clear to, uh, northwest, northeast Second Street. Going back a little bit of history, he told us that he talked with the mayor, uh, Penitz Miller, back in nineteen eighty, that he wanted to rezone, he should have been, should never have been rezoned to a light industrial, should have been residential single. And he was assured at the time that it would be taken care of. Well, jumping ahead forty-two years, it wasn't. So he found out that with it being light industrial, he has a lot of restrictions as to what he could do with his properties. And so I feel that it is our position to right a wrong that has been in the books for a long time and to rezone lots that contain houses north of the Landis building back to single residential.
Single residential.
Just that block right there, that, just the block?
Yeah, yeah.
So one side of the block?
Well, except for the Landis building itself.
Right, but from, so from the block and then the alley, is that strip?
Yes.
Along the Galliano property. Ash, what do we need to do to?
I said, third, I'll sit at one, a medical. Is this situation ever it's, A and B, we can refer to the city. We just am in the audience, a call of audience.
Do we need a, are we doing it separately?
Can we go ahead?
This, this, this part, like she must make a motion for, to rezonate, and then we can.
Five P.
Okay, I'll make a motion to rezone that.
Okay.
I'll second.
And. And refer to the city attorney.
Yes.
Hi, about Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
I think, oh, this.
You gotta talk, Doug.
The only thing I wanna make sure that we want that rezone back to head residential. Everything east or west of the alley, uh, not including Landis, we have no, no business, we don't own that property. We own the property all the way down to northeast Second Street. And my last statement is, uh, every time I come to the council, it's been over forty years that we fought to have this place in that area down there. It was supposed to be rezoned back to residential in nineteen eighty-two. Peter Miller sat here with the council. I know that you people are involved, so I wanna, I wanna explain two things. Number one, my lawyer says you cannot rezone, council, until you have written certified letters that must be mailed to the people that live there. We have never received any letters. It also must be published in the paper. Nobody has told me when it was ever rezoned back to light industrial. The one thing that really got me upset, I want you to understand this. Light industrial says if our property ever burns down, we cannot rebuild. So I wanna tell you people something. I was born in that house in nineteen thirty-two. That was my grandfather's farm. We've lived in that, I probably spent a third of my ha, my life in that house I'm living in right now. I want, I want, if you rezone it back to residential, to stop all this nonsense, I would love to have a letter saying that you have rezoned it back, and the council did approve it, because the way it's set right now, anything in that block, which is where my daughter lives, right next door to me at one fifteen, or one eleven. My niece lives down below, that's all belong to our family, and I will make sure it stays in our family. So would you please rezone it back to residential, so we can do things once in a while we wanna do to it?
Yeah, I made the motion, just the, uh, motion and ask to have that done, and I think it might be, well, it's some sort of a notice once it's complete and just to satisfy.
Just for the amount of having.
Right. I think the attorneys will send those notices as part of the profit process, so you'll probably get your certified letter, you'll probably see it in the paper as they go through their process.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, B recommendation for Doug, Bond Durant, fence ordinance. You wanna talk about this with all thought?
Which one?
Defensive ordinance.
Uh, we just, uh, we went a lot, can I just sit here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we just went a lot by what Jason recommended. He, he approved, he liked the language that Bond Durant had, that it was, it was upheld in court. So he felt that it would be a better way of rewriting and expressing our code on defense and accessory buildings.
Is there any difference, do we know, is there any difference to our current code?
Um.
I didn't think there was much, I didn't see any difference.
The language.
Just the way it's stated.
It looks like everyone's a four-foot setback in arms, and I think this one says two.
In the front or in the back?
Uh. Did you guys have an issue with that? Is that what sparked us, or just?
Kind of like, you know, kind of going through various aspects of the codes, just trying to update it.
So it wasn't like somebody brought up, uh, this is to.
The council is okay, is a point pair to the city. To a mentor.
My Dolly. Hi, about Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Okay, six, two thousand two twenty-two street improvement project, uh, this time I open the public hearing. Did you receive any answers?
No.
Comments, concerns from general public? Close public hearing. Okay, Forrest, you wanna talk on this?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Forrest Aldridge, Main Street Camp. We received bids last week for the street improvements project. And. Council last week, last month, but part of the yen, sure, you left everything at home.
What are you trying to say?
Thank you, sir.
You've seen this already, but. Uh, so we received bids, uh, low bid was submitted by Inroads out of Benoit. Now we received three bids, and uh, what our recommendation is to award the contract to Inroads for the base bid, and the base bid is everything on this map in red. And so this would be asphalt overlaying all the streets that are in red. And I guess that'll be kind of later in the agenda, but that's our recommendation, councils to work the base bid. We're looking at the yellow as well, to see if we can keep that in budget. You'll, you'll probably see something next month at your council meeting, uh, adding some more pavement. About three hundred thousand, low bid's one seventy-seven, so we have some money in the budget, and we wanna tack all that yellow that I mean, the lower right, so. We're back, I have the August, we can work that.
The Inroads, I've, I've never heard of them. Do you have any experience with them?
We do, uh, they're, um, yes, they've been doing fine, they're an asphalt company out of Orange.
Six.
Need a motion to lose the base, base.
Um, quick question, Forrest. Is this just completely overlay, or are they milling?
There's milling with it.
There is milling?
Yes.
And they're putting back, what, two inches, I see?
Two inches, yes.
Two?
Yes.
Can we have all the millings for the city? Do we make, put it in there that we will, as a city, we'll take the millings?
I'll check and see what we did with that, I'm not quite sure. I'll check and make sure if we can keep them, we will.
And just to kind of, what we're talking about, if you keep the millings, the millings is like ground asphalt, basically. So if we keep those, um, I think that would be good for, like, your alleys. If you do put it down, uh, with the summer heat and everything, you start driving on it, it packs almost like asphalt, but yeah. So that is good. A lot of times you can, if you talk to the companies, they'll give you the millings, because then the limits their trucking and everything else too, so.
Did you put that in the old, in the alley of Harrison?
We've used, we've used ground asphalt milling for years.
Yeah, I think it does work great.
We have a place to put them?
Yeah, we have a place to stockpile them.
Just stockpile them. Yeah, maybe check into that.
You would pay for it?
Oh, would that have been included in any of the street? If you'd included it in that, would it be in any of the stuff that you gave us?
The milling?
Yeah, that milling part or not?
No, probably not.
I would have done this, but.
Yeah.
Which is pretty.
Probably over there, I'll, I'll look it up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thanks for mentioning that, that makes sense.
There's a motion to accept the base bid, one hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine, fifty.
No, not as part of the, not, the, the motion needs to be just accepting of the.
Yes. I, I'll make that motion.
Then.
Oh. I'll second it.
Patrick, Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Seven, that's two browned schools. So at this time, open the public hearing. Did you receive any action? Any comments, concerns from general public? Close public hearing. B, resolution number twenty-two, twenty C. You wanna talk about some of those holes?
Yes. So the state practice of school sidewalk project that's going from All Saints Church on the north side of Second west all the way to the school. And this was bid through the Iowa DOT, so it's not a local letting, we didn't have control over a lot of this stuff. Uh, we, the DOT, on behalf of the city, received three bids, and they were uh, round numbers, two hundred ninety thousand from Caliber, three hundred nine thousand from TPA Country, and three hundred ten thousand from Jasper Construction. So they're pretty tight bids. Uh, however, they're above the money. Uh, we have a grant for two hundred sixteen thousand for this. It was not a hundred percent, never a hundred percent match, it was an eighty percent match, so that was based off of a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar estimate. So eighty percent of two seventy is two sixteen. And then the engineering was on top of that, but we're above the money that we had, so we have a couple of choices. We can find the money somewhere, um, have the additional funds and award it to Caliber. Uh, Caliber was a contractor that did downtown. Or we can reject all bids and then go out for bids again, uh, over the winter for construction next year. This is, uh, set up, so we'll get the construction done again this year. Uh, we reject all bids. Your fuzzy crystal ball is as good as mine, as far as what's the price of.
What's your, what's your thinking this one?
Later, so. Well, it seems like Caliber is not recommended. Before we've had issues in, as the city before. They, they, I don't know, my opinion is they did okay, but they're pretty lousy on coming up and getting some repairs done.
Their punch list, taking care of their punch list took nine months.
Yeah, so their cleanup was, took a long time. Uh, but at the time, the quality of their work, we didn't have any issues, but, but yeah, they took forever to get it done.
So we have the option of just waiting them?
You have the option of rejecting all bids.
What's that do to the grant?
The grant would still be fine. Yeah, the grant's still good until twenty twenty-four or something. Yeah, the grant still would be good. And there's, um, the DOT would have to concur with the rejection of the bids, so this would just be the first step, DOT asked off, so agree with that. But that's an option of the, of the council.
I mean, I would make the motion, for me, I would make the motion to reject the bids and revisit in the winter going into the fall. I mean, this isn't a project that we have to have done right now, and if the grant's gonna be okay, maybe things, it gives us a little time to either A, save money and figure out how we're gonna pay for it with the overages, and B, maybe prices will go down a little bit, and we can go from there.
The, the higher prices of just concrete?
It's, it was between the concrete and the earthwork, so the, the two increases were at, between those two things.
I can recommend that to the project.
I just don't think it's something we.
I recommend projecting.
Okay.
We really have issues with the contract, and we have to come up with additional money to, to go way over the project. I just thought that was still exist.
Concur with. Did you?
I did make the motion to reject. And then revisit, revisit in the winter to be bid out in the spring?
Need the second of this motion.
Second by Morgan. Hi, about Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we'll stop here, and go to B, C, D, okay? My last question.
Um. You can, you kind of did, uh, public hearing. Yes, it was stopped with B, C, D, because we'll look at maybe change, making some changes to the plans possibly. Uh, so yeah, B, C, yeah. Uh, so actually, what you did is you acted on um, A, and you acted on, uh, C, I guess. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Forrest, just a second.
This way, but I know that's bid through the DOT, but is there any way that the local contractors can get notification of that?
Yes, but they have to be DOT approved, um, and we can, when the notifications come out, we can sure get that notification to you and the city.
Okay.
And they, and let them know about it.
Okay. Oh, is it to be, what does it take to be DOT approved?
I don't know.
Forrest, it's kind of a process. Most small guys don't mess with it.
Yeah, there's a lot of paperwork.
Yeah.
Are we talking small guy, like, grand asshole?
Uh, no.
No. Like, like, just small, and I shouldn't say small guys, that's maybe, that's respectful, but, yeah, just.
The small, so, yeah, someone local.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah. Three, three people that might.
Right.
Do the work.
Right.
Yeah, we can make sure, make sure they're aware of it, but, you know, getting the DOT approval and then all the paperwork that comes with this is pretty daunting.
Okay, thanks, Forrest. Okay, A. Okay.
I can do that. Chip on finance, uh, just to give the council an update on the status of housing base four. We've been working a lot with folks at Seed and with Forrest on, we have a verbal purchase agreement with the, the McGowan family. Uh, Warren's provided there, determined a formal version of the purchase agreement. Uh, that's under consideration by, by them, is out of fair assessment. And the, the next action item under, under this agenda item sets a public hearing made for financing, if we're not to exceed amount of one hundred thousand. That's the general corporate purpose limit that we have under Iowa law. That's slightly, slightly below the purchase price, so what's planned is, is that the city would fund a portion of that from cash on hand, then it get reimbursed when the, let's call it the long-term financing for base four occurs. The risk is, you're assuming you're gonna get good bids for base, base four, uh, infrastructure side. And then you're making that assumption as well, really, if you proceed with buying the land, or on behalf, Seed does, I'm, I'm effectively on behalf of the city. So just, uh, heads up everyone, I think everyone understands that, but just to make it, outline that, that item for folks. The, um, so that, the city would expend cash, that'll be reimbursed when the financing gets put in place. Construction bids for base four are proposed to be received.
Over the winter.
And that's really what, what's, in terms of the status of the project, if you guys have anything to add, that's kind of the brief summary of things, and on, on the financing, also, this is more looking ahead for the August meeting, but there's kind of an update on their, this gets to a later agenda item, you're like in the fire truck as well, but I wanted to get, uh, the three, there's proposed to be three private placement financings. The fire truck, the second for the insurance, funding for the current fiscal year, and then the third for the land purchase. There are various, uh, features with each financing, and then, and then toward the end in the blue font, under each financing is, is a timeline, steps that are proposed. Um, just looking ahead primarily to that action there, but, um, happy to answer questions that you might have on the, on the approach action.
I guess you could say very, very well, I just want the council to be, know what we do in here. This is our own general obligation, so it will affect the tax rate with our coming budget.
It's, it, it won't, and because we're planning to pay for it, we're ultimately, assume, so what's in process as well is the amendment to the urban renewal plan. That's proposed for action at your August meeting, had a number of calls with your bond councilors in Whitney, they're getting that prepared, just in, in anticipation, that takes some time. And Warren's been involved in that as well, and, and that, so that takes some time, that'll be proposed for action at your August meeting. It's, um, it's a process to go through, and we've been through it with the first three phases, and we're continuing the same for the base four.
And it's not locking us into anything, like, right now bids or anything like that, it's just getting it going, uh, I don't know, what, uh, kind of like a pre-approval type thing?
That's right.
Kind of getting that, you know, and then you see how stuff comes in, and we go from there, so.
If you do the financing, that effectively locks in the buying of land, of course.
Right.
But it, um.
But we got steps before that, before we can even do that, and that's what we're doing here.
You're beginning it.
Setting that public hearing.
Exactly.
It's exactly what we're doing, we're just kind of getting that.
That's right, but, uh, I think the thought is you've, you've got a willing seller, and you don't wanna lose that willing seller, so uh, this gets a, a financing mech, item B in this agenda item gets a financing mechanism of ways to cover the vast majority of that cost.
So that's very much what we need the council to have from the update, which, uh, chip, I think you did very well, it's ready. You will be setting a date, we will decide for the public hearing, and for now, through setting the date for the public hearing, we will get more information about the finance, and then back into financing and all this stuff. That's what we need the council, we are aware of what's going on.
And you've had a lot of that at your April meeting, I think it was April, or it might have been March, I think it's April though. So that has covered the high, the range of cost alternatives, uh, so we're really trying to get the information in front of the council in the morning of John. Uh, so yeah, time to make some decisions.
So I'm gonna make that motion that we, uh, set the date for the public.
That would be A, B, this motion to win two, dash, win two, C.
Right.
Just set it for August eighth. Let's call second half.
Patrick.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Okay. Street traffic, that is. To the floor.
So. Bedtime reading here. Uh, so basically, as part of phase four, what we're looking at doing is running a road, hopefully. Uh, that's still negotiating with, uh, property owners and whether that will happen or not, but the hope is that we run a, a road from the east side of phase four down to White Hole Road along the east side of the school. And so as part of that, uh, the, especially the Guthrie County engineer requested that we do a traffic study. White Hole Road right there, half, the north half is in Guthrie County, south half is in Dare County. Uh, and right now, part of it's in the city limits and part of it's in Guthrie County, so it involves everybody. So, uh, this traffic study, we did that to see what the impact of phase four would have on White Hole Road. Basically, the conclusion is that we do not recommend that we do any turn lanes on White Hole Road into that road. However, we do recommend, uh, that the speed limit sign, uh, it's the forty-five fifty-five right at the very east entrance to the football field, that driveway. And when that road goes in, that we trans, uh, move that further east, uh, pass where this road will be. So that's our recommendation as part of this traffic study. Um, looking for just a simple motion to approve the traffic study, and then the next step, we would submit this to Guthrie County and Dare County for their review.
And you said we're still negotiating, still talking with owners on whether we're even gonna be able to make that road happen?
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody got a thought? Second by Delight, how do you go?
Patrick? Yes.
Delight?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yeah.
Cala?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Forrest?
Nine economic, director Matt?
All right. We got a, we got a long list here, so I'll just kind of summarize a few items here. All since addition, there are four lots available at this time. The leadership program, I'm still under development, and we have a, uh, a first meeting coming up to like thirteenth or five o'clock P M at the library. And then another one Wednesday, August twelfth, twelve o'clock noon. So we're still looking for participants with the leadership program. Uh, that's, uh, using the postmaster's curriculum. I put Andy Forst in my report, you guys have any questions about that? Okay, well, he, uh, I've been trying to reach out to him and he's been busy. Uh, he has some things going on and he hasn't, he has not responded to my emails and phone calls until today. So he did respond today and he is still currently in the process of getting his, uh, building plans together and working with Jason, so.
When was the, you know, we visited with Andy up here that one time, we, he asked for, what, four months and we extended it to six or what? Where were you at with the timeframe on that?
Yeah, I think he's down to like one or two months.
It is what it is, we gave him the deadline and not much we could do.
So he, he's still working on plans instead of his building and everything?
Yeah. So with that, if you guys do decide, then let the city help him and get a list.
Is that his deadline is August?
Did you, uh, did you reach out, will you, or will you reach out to him and let him know when he, when that deadline is?
Yeah.
Make sure that he gets that. So there's no surprises coming back, why not?
He could have Jason, he could have, he could have just, Jason too. If he's working with Jason, we could know more about it too.
Okay.
Okay, there's dirt being moved, I did see a little bit of dirt being moved.
I just, I just, I don't even know where it's at as far as.
Oh, is that what guys know? Oh, it's just, it's.
Yeah, but I don't know how, actually how far into the progress and stuff.
Oh, where's that, yeah, where he's at.
He has a.
We have permits pulled yet?
No. He hasn't, he hasn't supplied enough information to get a permit.
Yeah, I, I think it's imperative that he knows exactly from our meeting what night deadline is and how important it is. There's a sense of urgency there.
Matt, how many lots are you talking in there?
Phase four, we got four left.
No, phase four.
Four.
Oh. Twenty-seven to forty-seven, is that?
I think.
Lots could be available in phase four.
Oh, yeah, we had, it depends on if we have a base bid and all that, it's in that range. And then, uh, Hotel Stewart. Since, uh, I made this, uh, report, uh, I haven't given it to the package, so I've had some conversations. Uh, summary of it though is that, uh, the, there's been some discussion about the upper level housing grant. And it was not in the application, but there are some federal guidelines that they have slipped in after the, after, after the grant was applied for, but just as it was awarded. This is, um, sorry, I don't know that, the code on it, but it's a six hundred page document that the federal government wants the state to apply by with this grant. So, Grant House justifiably has asked for this process to be slowed down just a little bit and researched this. There are some items in it that calls for calling for public bids instead of the accepting the taking on by his own. So this also makes the city one hundred percent liable. So I'm gonna ask for some time to research this document. The state suggests reaching out to your city attorney and have them rebuild it. So I don't know if you guys want, maybe reach out to the attorney. Take this on myself.
I would think that would be probably appropriate if we're gonna, you know, potentially be on the hook for something.
Okay, so we're, he, has he signed the development agreement?
No. No, but I, all in his defense, ironically.
Does this affect the development agreement, this six hundred page document?
Yes. Because it not only makes him liable, it makes us liable.
He's asking for, that's item nine A.
He is also asking for an extension.
June, July, what, twenty twenty-three, alright?
June.
June twenty twenty-eight. That's really what his work is. And, and assume you will sign the development agreement and we have to do that extension. What is the conclusion?
Well, um, I have, unfortunately, I haven't been able to catch up a few to, um, as well. Um, we've been, we're busy and we just got back today. But I did have a meeting with Carla James in region twelve uh, during that week, and so that's why we just, I've had so much coming in, I wasn't able to throw it all down in the report.
Can we table this piece until next month and tell, maybe you two have had a time to converse and figure out?
So right now, what I'm bringing up is just a part of my report. So I'm just going over some items here. I'm not trying to go over the item of his asking for an extension. I'm not addressing that specifically yet. So. Okay.
So, on the agenda, when it says extension, we're not considering the extension at this time? Is that correct?
I'm trying to go over my report, I'm just trying to go a bit.
I think your report was put in with the city department updates instead of just being a line item on the agenda.
Yeah, 'cause I do.
So. Uh, so that's, I didn't, I'm going over with on that. So. Uh, so let's go ahead and jump to his extension though, um, his request.
Okay, so on that note, can we table this for another month so that way you and Ash have time to discuss and recommend what needs to be done on all of it?
Yeah.
Or, or is there a time, timetable where this needs to be done, this extension?
Uh, this extension here is pertaining to the catalyst agreement. The upper level housing grant is on top of this catalyst agreement, so he's asking for an extension on the catalyst grant deadline. It's related to slightly different.
And the development agreement to that has June, when, when two, three.
Yes.
So he asked for that extension.
So, but if you'd like to table that subject.
I mean, there's, what I would like to see is maybe at the next meeting, we have this all drawn out and maybe a memo of which grant and what, because he's got a lot of grants going on, he's got a development agreement going on that he hasn't signed. He's wanting an extension of this, but needs this and has variance with this, and I, there's just a lot going on with this.
Yeah, there'd be.
It'd be nice to be.
There's too much unknown right now to say.
Yeah, if you could have something saying, this is what he all has and this is what he's wanting to do and kind of put it all together in one package instead of having a six hundred page document in a, in an update that you're trying to give us, but then he wants to, you see what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's really confusing to have all these pieces and not have it put together.
So meanwhile, if your table lets on next month, meanwhile, can we let our attorneys look at this? Then.
Yeah.
We can get a little bit more information next month, probably.
On this six hundred page document, yeah.
Yeah, good idea. So, that's one aspect, region twelve is asking, uh, the state to give some clarification on it. That, we're not the only community that's facing this issue. Many communities are facing this issue and the, it's a federal guideline and the state got done with it and.
To give us more clarification.
Yeah, that's why I think.
My motion would be to table Mr. Austin's uh, item, but also to refer to our city attorney to give us clearance on what this document is and how it affects the, and this particular project.
Are you wanting our city to pay for the journey or him? Six hundred pages, you're gonna.
Well, I mean, this is, are you, he's telling us it's.
That's what the state is.
Telling us that we're gonna be, and we could potentially be liable. I mean, that's putting us at risk. I mean, do I wanna pay for attorneys to go over six hundred pages? No, but I also don't wanna be on the hook for something because we don't know.
That's why you belong to council of governments, so that each individual town doesn't have to hire their own city attorney to go over the same six hundred pages.
Say that again.
I said, that's why you belong to a council of governments, so each individual city that's getting a catalyst grant doesn't have to pay their city attorney to go over six hundred pages. I would.
Which is why.
Me, I'm just a member of the public that doesn't have a right to say anything at this point, but. So I mean, I wouldn't hire the attorney, I would.
So you, you'd rely on region twelve?
I would rely on region twelve, I'd make a decision until you had.
What kind of timeframe, have, have they given you any kind of timeframe?
No, region twelve, they're, they're still working on it, they're still trying to get.
Can we maybe?
Could you, would you want to amend that to region twelve?
Yes.
Wait for the state to have.
Yes, 'cause I don't wanna spend money, we don't have to.
I would, I would, if she, on her amended motion, region twelve, I would second that to her own, and so.
So, uh, so, I apologize, I just, I had a, a lot of information that came up on Thursday and Friday. Seems like everybody just wanted to brush everything at the last minute.
I'm sure. And so for in August, can we have a little bit more of an outline, if you have, happen to have time, of what grants he has and what, where we're at in the process?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For him, again, if I could just mention on a timeline standpoint, he should have clear knowledge that he, if he doesn't sign the development agreement, and, and he doesn't, you don't have all those approved by, you should look at it as November one. You, the city won't be able to certify tip, or by December one of twenty twenty-two, which would get December one, twenty twenty-two tip, get some rebate payment in F Y twenty-three, twenty-four. So he's looking at F Y twenty-five, so just clear knowledge.
Will be, yeah, and I say that's, that's what Christina was trying to find out from the beginning, which is, he's not signing the development agreement, which is the development agreement leading to all these grants.
Right.
So, we're trying to give him an extension on the development agreement, hoping that he will sign the development agreement. In order for us to go after all these grants. Because as we speak, he's not signing the development agreement. But he may have counter offer or something to sign if he, if we give an extension.
But he doesn't get tip if he doesn't sign it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's on him, and I'm not gonna force him to sign something.
And it's been kind of this ongoing, well, I'm not gonna sign it because of this, now I'm not gonna sign it because of this.
Absolutely.
So my thing is like, what makes, what, what leads me to believe that if we give him an extension, he's gonna sign it? But, yeah. I, I just, I don't have the confidence in that.
He was here like last month or something, and you talked, and I thought he told you, Ash, that, because you said, come in, and he's like, okay.
Yeah.
As he walked out.
Nothing, this is the process that I, I think we've been going through for two years. Yeah, but we've been doing this for two years, like I've heard this proposal for two years and it seems like it's just something, and then he wants to do this, and he wants to do that and something, and the sprinkler system that was in the thing, I don't know how that was news because that is uncommon, I don't know. That's not for me to decide, I'm just saying, he needs to sign his development agreement and I just. I feel like we keep offering him all of bridges and, and he's asking for more and we're not getting what we need. But he's gonna lose that on his tip funds if he doesn't sign it.
I forgot that.
Yes.
So he's at risk.
Yeah. And I've been trying to explain to him that many, many times, and I don't know if he, what else can be done?
Can he, I mean, here's a thought, if he wants these extensions and all of this, can he come to the meeting in August and?
Possibly.
Can, can we ask him to come here? I mean, he's asking for all this stuff and normally we don't talk about things if people aren't here, so. I guess if he wants his extension, he can come to.
So he's, he's wanting an extension to get the work done, right? But, yeah, I just, I don't understand why he's not signing it, that's, that's, that's where we're at, is are you gonna sign this or not? Do we know what his sticking point of signing the development agreement is? This is what I asked last month, was it went from being the evaluation of the property to, I'm like, how does that change signing this? What's, what's his thing? Because last time I knew it was the valuation of property.
But he has to have the development agreement to sign to get the tip funds, so that way he can get the grants, because he can't get the grants unless he has a city participation, which is our development agreement, so all of this is depending on whether he signs the development agreement.
Yeah.
And we can't get him to sign it.
Sure. So can we find that out, what, what his thing about signing that development? Yeah, what the, what the issue is.
And if he doesn't sign it, can he, can somebody ask him to, to meeting next month? I mean, if he wants these extensions, he can come ask, like any other person would have to.
Yes.
He did come before planning and zoning a month and a half ago.
Yeah, he wants a variance for some handicap accessible.
Apartment in the back.
And he was denied?
He, no, he wasn't, we, we recommended that, we agreed and recommended that the board of adjustment look at that. They did nothing with it. I don't know, I mean, I saw the minutes and no action was taken. So, I know that's concerning to us. But I know what happens when there's no action by the board of adjustment, does it just drop there?
That's the last. Sounds like. And their, their reasoning was because it's ground floor, right? No, nobody has ground floor apartments in town.
But I think he was asking for that to be addressed, wasn't he?
Well, board adjustment addressed it, and no action was taken.
As in, like, they, nobody made a motion?
Basically, that's what they're, I think Barry Swase had talked about it, people talked about, they, that's wrong, it shouldn't happen.
There were two there who did not want it to happen, and there were two that And there were two that were in agreement with it. And so the Board of Adjustment did not act on it.
Do they not have five people on there?
I'm talking about the public input.
Got you.
So, but yeah, the, the group, the board that, they, they don't, they didn't have five present, but they didn't give enough motion, they didn't get a motion, a second motion to go forward with it. So basically died.
Okay.
So his request died.
Well, I guess we just table it. Yeah, we, he figured out, he was like, I signed the development agreement. Oh, he can come back.
And, and if we should find out what it is, could you like let the council know, somebody?
Should we have an email?
Yeah. You know, I know we talked about getting emails and other stuff and I get, get.
Well, I can't. Okay.
If you talk to him, will you let Ash know so Ash can direct somebody at City Home to you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter who.
Want to do email?
Did we finish that?
I think we're.
There's a motion.
There's a motion.
Just to table it.
Yeah, move like Christina second, but call about the shift.
Yes.
Delway?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Matt V.
Okay, the second one is from a city in Creve de Plaisson. They're asking for an extension to perform repairs on 113 Northeast 7th Street.
Is this the burn building?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to extend it. I mean, they were only given a six-month window to do it.
Right.
And they working very hard on the other building and have been moving on that. So I mean, I, you can see that they're motivated to move. I don't see why it would.
I spoke with them a bit. I think they originally, in their demands of, when they purchased it, it was, they wanted it to be 2023. Is that correct?
If I remember right, it was.
Yeah, they, they.
Otherwise, they wouldn't have bought it. So I think that there was some, something went wrong in there where they said that it said 2022. So I think this is kind of, not originally when they purchased it or what they thought originally. I could be wrong on that, but I believe that was important.
Yeah, so I'll read off their request out of the letter. Uh, our original bid was approved by City Council on November 8, 2021. We were recently informed that the modification to the timeline was not recorded in the minutes. We ask that you make a formal motion to extend the timeline to complete the week of limitation and receive a certificate of occupancy in the spring of 2023. So she's asking for a motion.
And I made, I made that motion.
Oh, sorry.
One second, have you got the capacity?
Yes.
Delway?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
That alone?
Yes.
Dan, please tell us.
I'm sure you all got the letter note I wrote about my property. Want to put a permanent driveway into the garage that I added on my house about 17 years ago. Something like that. And I didn't know what the planning and zoning board had decided. They did have a meeting last Wednesday. I was not able to attend because I had a previous engagement. So, did you get any word from planning and zoning?
Yeah, same letter here.
You want it closed?
I would like to close that.
Just that portion?
Not, well, I thought if you close the street, you'd have to close it all the way through. I don't know if people realize that the lot my house is on and the lot next door for Josh Larson lives. At the time that Nile Forest sold those lots, those were commercially zoned lots. So therefore they are very narrow across the front and they go all the way back to where it's the deepest in the backyard, mine and Josh's. The other people living around there, I don't know exactly what theirs are, but I can't understand. Like I said, I've lived there 48 years. And no one's ever commissioned or asked about it except me, like several years ago. Tired of gravel in my yard. From the gravel part of the street that you guys have opened for me and allowed me to have and maintain.
I don't want to be a devil's advocate, but comprehensive plan was set up in 1980s to benefit the future development of this town, not one individual person. We run into the same problem on Black Hills. We close one street where Sebrowski lived, before he lived there. We close the other one where Janice Durham lives now. It blocks the access for future development. I might not see it in my lifetime, my kids won't, but that will be developed in the homes. And I always said you shouldn't close a valley or a street for future development. But that's my opinion. I don't have.
Did somebody talk to Jim Henderson?
How about when you guys threw that water line through there? That's not very far down underneath that.
Access.
That came in from McFarland's all the way down, come down that street and then went across my backyard. That's high. Yeah.
We were involved in that.
But I think there's a, isn't there a sewer line that's going?
There's some access points there.
I think there might be a manhole or something close there, isn't there?
I've got one that's connected to the new thing they put in. I've got one in my yard, yes.
When I was on P and Z and then made my transition to council, Neil Bryan came to us and asked us for the same exact thing. And we told him no because we needed access to that sewer. There's a sewer or something back there that the city needs access to. And I think there's the same thing back in the middle of that, that there is an access that they need. Like is, is there an easement through there and that there's some access that we need to have?
There are existing utilities in that right away. If you abandon the right away, then easements need to be created to support those utilities that are in there.
And if you, if you pave over, concrete over, it's up to the homeowner to fix it if they have to tear off the concrete or repair the lines, correct?
That's a good Jim question.
I think that's how it does. Because wasn't it, wasn't that the case for the Casey store? With a sewer system that went underneath the parking lot? If Jim had to dig that up, then Casey replaces the concrete on that?
Yes.
From that lift station.
That's a clear street. I mean, that's a clear shot straight from South Gaines to Third. So at any point, I mean, that could very well become a street. It'd need.
So you're talking about the rock in your yard just from snow removal?
Mostly, yes, yes. And I think if Jim was here, he'd tell you that plowing that's a pain in the ass. How many vehicles has he got stuck down there? All glass broken out of the back hole because he chained to a truck trying to get it out of there. And that happens every year if he gets stuck.
And I know we've been admonished by former council people and former mayor that we should, should really think about vacating street. But I understand that too, you know? It's been there as long as I've been alive, you know, and, and nothing done. You know, it just, have we ever vacated a street in a similar situation like this?
Well, we told Neil, no, because we need access.
And I know we talked, there's talk about, we did vacate some of Black Hills over there where Jody's has her house, but we, the city is giving more valuation from that property rather than just, you know, having an empty property there, so.
So the planning and zoning okay it or not?
They made the motion and they passed it. So it comes there.
But you have the express consent that you would give them right away if they need to get back to the sewer line or.
Yeah, I don't believe any of them stopped them before. For entries.
That was our motion.
That's fair. I think Warren had to.
For what it's worth, there are two things you ought to think about. Sioux Forest is not the only adjoining landowner. So it's not a foregone conclusion that if you vacate that street, that that would become her property. I mean, that, that would have to be a separate process. The other thing is, it is a planted street. So the city could pave a portion of the street that leads to. I mean, she does have to drive down that street to get to her garage. You could pave it.
And that was.
And then she wouldn't have gravel in her driveway.
That's a good point because I was gonna bring that up here. Second thing for doing this, is there some way that we could make that paved, blocked up? Something, I don't know, that would mediate the grass in the yard.
We're gonna have a paving crew in town.
Yeah, we just passed the cert.
But we see how much it would cost.
You could use the milled asphalt to.
There we go.
Create a portion of the street.
Can you check in on that?
Something we can look into?
Yes. See what that would just.
Looking for that sewer, that'd be suspect right now instead of just.
In fact, some of that black, you know, people that put in the black driveways, snow melts off of those bodies.
Yeah, it does.
So.
I mean, we already have an asphalt company in town. It may not hurt to see how much it costs.
Please do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we stop the vote on P and Z's recommendation.
Uh, the vote will be to look into the asphalt, to asphalt the alley. And give the votes. That would be the vote. To just look into.
You say, you need the motion?
Yeah. To look into the price.
I'm with Morgan.
Everybody vote for Morgan. And Patrick?
Yes.
Delway?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Van Laan?
Yes.
Raven? Mike here?
I just have one question regarding this. I don't think we normally have a problem with this. But when people are closing that road down, it would be nice if they would check with the owners of the scoop because Ruby's and Johnny's aren't the only business owners on that street that are affected anymore. We do have the ice cream shop and so. Well, the flower shop, so for this particular instance, the flower shop will be closed by the time they roll in. But I don't know if they've checked with PD either. They mentioned something about it, but it's happening in like three weeks.
Usually in this case, we refer it to the police, but you.
And Jim Henderson?
I, Jim Henderson.
But we, can we ask that they check with the other business owner down there to make sure that they're okay with that?
Yeah, to the police.
That's the first that, that's the first that.
We heard about this, so.
Yeah.
Unless they, unless they.
Yeah, we refer it to you feel okay with it, or council is okay. But council member is, we just wanted you to check with the other local.
I wasn't asking for them. I was asking for the person who's putting it on to check with the scoop. I don't think it's the cops responsibility. You don't have to check up the scanner.
I don't think it'll be a problem.
I don't think so either. I'm just saying, I, I don't really, I don't perceive they having any issue with closing that street for. Heads up is always good though. Yeah, I mean, they're gonna benefit from this, but it would be nice for them to be made aware of.
Yeah, we need a motion to refer it to Jim Henderson, the lady and the police.
Can we just make a motion to do it? I mean, I mean, we are a council. We can just make a motion to go ahead with this and, and have them look at it when there's any issues.
Yeah, we need a motion.
So I, I'd make a motion that we, we proceed with this. We can check with, make sure we're paved, appropriate on that.
Which shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
And Jim Henderson?
And just get a word out to have them reach out to the scoop. I almost said the cap. Scoop. Just kind of, you know, let them know what's going on. They might not even know that they were there, so.
Move like call us back. Morgan, how you got? Patrick?
Yes.
Delway?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
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 Okay, 12, John?
Well, actually, um, I got some good news today. So we received some news. Let's see, let's see, now it's dated.
So you have.
Oh, they. The NMS. And they were looking at June for the June of 23 for our delivery date. However, I just talked to Mindy, who is our sales rep, up at Wield Coach. And she told me that she ordered the chassis or they're working with Chevy, Ford, GM, all them to get chassis. And the going rumor is that they're gonna have all of the chassis built and to Florida for the box by the end of October. So once they have a chassis, 60 to 90 days. And then it comes up to Carol to get the finishing touches. So if that timeline holds out, we're looking at February of next year for a delivery date. So I consider in June, of course. It's not ideal, right? But I don't think that we really, it is what it is. Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that some of the alternatives, like looking at demo units or buying used ambulance, you know, first and foremost, you're spending at least 10 to 20% more for not even an equivalent unit. So if you want to go from 157 to 190 for something similar, you know, maybe I can get it here by December, maybe if we're lucky. Um, but otherwise, you know, if you go vote, we look to purchase something other than what we've already agreed to purchase. I mean, it's automatically 10% more for that. So, and I have no idea what the timeline would be.
And it's, this is a little bit better. What's not better?
So, and then she actually scheduled a meeting with her to kind of put some of the, pin some of the fine tunes on it, if you will, you know, just like button placement and that kind of stuff next week. So, you know, as we get closer to that, you know, October, September, stuff like that, you know, she'll have a more specific city, you know, let's actually start getting chassis and building them. Because obviously we're not the only ones waiting for an ambulance. So even after they do get the chassis, sometimes that timeline can be a little bit different too. Just to get the total experience for that. So, any questions on that? No. Um, so there's a couple of other things that I wanted to touch on. So I don't know if you guys have heard much, but right now we're at the Board of Supervisors, Penora, EMS and Sureshi kind of to make EMS an essential service in Iowa or, I'm not, in Guthrie County, not Iowa. And so that requires a couple of things. Right now, as far as the city's concerned, there's not a whole lot the city needs to or can do about that. What they have to do is the Board of Supervisors is currently developing a, what's the word they use for their motions? Kind of like, what is it?
Resolution.
Resolution, that's the one. They're drafting a resolution to make a board and then deem it essential. So then once they do that, or if they do that, once that resolution passes, then that board goes and discusses kind of more of the semantics, you know? Who does what, what kind of tax, that's kind of an important part, what kind of tax and how much? Um, and then that board makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors then puts that on a ballot. And then you have to get a 60% approval for the resolution from the Board of Supervisors. Once that's done, um, and it comes back to the cities and then the cities have to sign 208Es and do some of that other stuff. There's a lot of, a lot of good that can come out of that. Most importantly, uh, I mean, we could see six plus figures in dollars from the county to benefit our service. There are some concerns, like that would include us contractually obligated to cover the area that we do. So, you know, we can't, it's not, that's what we're doing currently. But I mean, once you sign 208Es to cover these areas, you have to do that. So, um, you know, so we have to kind of tackle some concerns, which would be down the road. You know, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't actually, so we don't have time to get it on the general election ballot. And then, so you're looking at next year. So if we sign, if we do that for next year, the tax doesn't go into effect until January 1st of '24. And then we wouldn't start seeing any of those. And then we wouldn't start seeing any of those taxes until the start of the fiscal year, July first, twenty four. So, um, so we've got some time, you know, and plus it just takes time to get to a point where the cities could actually do something and or benefit from that. But that's just kind of an update on where they're at with that.
What, what is your feeling on? How fast they might go on this? It's what you told me there. It seems just like, oh my God, here we go. It's gonna be two years before they can get a board set up. But what do you think? Do they seem receptive to it? Is it?
They have some reservations, but I think that, um, you know, a couple of them are in favor and then a couple of them have, you know, just some things they want to work out. Um, a lot of the holdup right now is that they have to get the resolution, then they have to post it. And then they have to wait like the ninety days and then they have to have a meeting about it and, you know, there's a bunch of waiting time. So even, you know, if they were excited and they were like, yeah, let's get this to the voters, there's still mandatory timeframes that they can't shorten at all. Just, that's just the Iowa code. So there's nothing they can do about it. But I think that, you know, we went up there for a couple of meetings and they just sound like they're to the point now where they want to. Get the ball rolling and, and, and see where the, the.
Nothing that can't be overcome though, you know, no issues that really seem too big for them.
Correct. And that, you know, the, the big thing is, is that, you know, even though it kind of seems like forever out, that gives us, you know, some time to go do some community outreach. To explain to everybody like, you know, this is what we're trying to do and benefits, um, you know, some concerns and that kind of stuff. I'm excited. Any other questions on that? Um, so then the, kind of the last big thing I'd like to talk about is, um, our medical director. He, he's medical director for like seven or eight different services, is what he had said to me.
Yes.
Dr. Hanson. Um, he works, well, he formerly been working in the Dare County. He'd been their medical director for the hospital, the ER down there for. Something like that. And he's, um, since, uh, retired from that. And so now he expressed to me that he would like to retire from, um, you know, being medical director for EMS services in general. Uh, he didn't really give me a timeframe. Um, legally. You would have to send me a certified letter and so on and so forth. If you were to have like a, oh, you know, August first, I'm done or whatever. And which I believe it has to be a minimum of ninety days out from the time I get the letter. So, so we're in the process of kind of talking with some of the doctors around here because they have to be M D's or D O's. So, you know, unfortunately, plenty of a lot of times they have, you know, mid-level providers, N Ps or P As, so those don't count. Um, the reason that I bring that up and that it's kind of important is, uh, because we are. Like one of, I didn't print off enough copies of this. Um. So over last. Most services have gone to paying their medical. Um, that's standard practice for outside of EMS, you know, medical directors for the care center and hospice and, you know, any place that provides medical service. It has to work under a doctor. They pay their medical directors to do that. Um, so I, I asked around to find out like, well, what are people paying? Because we had not historically done that and, you know, a lot of these small agencies had not, especially when they were still volunteer. Um, and the pays range anywhere from people that aren't paying, which is few and far between. Um, the lowest I saw was five hundred dollars, which is Earl and over here, but they're a non-transport agency, um, all the way up to clearly. Morgan pays theirs eighty, twenty eight thousand dollars a year, but, um, most of them sit in the couple thousand range. Uh, see a lot of two thousands on this list, five thousand, um, eight thousand, you know, a lot of those services are doing more calls than we are. But as far as the medical director is concerned, and whether you're on five hundred calls or five thousand calls, your job and liability is essentially the same. Um, so I don't know that, that although we don't need to pay ours two thousand dollars a month, you know. Really, depending on what the request is from whoever decides they want to take that on, it could be a couple thousand dollars a year. I know I was talking to the guy from Carlisle and they, they're, they run some more calls than we do, but their city's pretty similar to ours. And, and they've been paying their guy, lady actually, uh, two thousand dollars for about ten or twelve years, I think he said. But she's on the verge of retirement. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, they're increasing their pay to six thousand. So that they can try and entice somebody else to come in.
For this in a year, not a month, right?
Yes, per year. Um, I know Dallas County, they do five thousand and they do two payments throughout the year. Um, you know, a couple of people said that they do multiple payments, so it's not, you know, it's not something, uh, that you have to pay per month or anything. Um, Penora didn't know. They do pay their medical director, but he didn't know how much they were paying him. And at least he never got back to me about it. So, so I don't know where they're at with how much they're paying. But, um, Dare County, they're different because they work for the hospital. And so they have a medical director that oversees them anyways, so they clearly don't pay above and beyond that. But, um, so that's just kind of the heads up. I don't. Honestly don't know what they're gonna request, you know, um, there's a new doctor coming here to the Guthrie County Clinic, uh, um, an actual M D. And so we're gonna see if he's interested. Um, and he's fresh out of residency, so depending on what, you know, I don't, I don't know what he's gonna request. I haven't personally talked to him yet. Um, so I don't, one, I don't even know if he's interested. And two, you know, we, like I said, it could be. Five hundred or a thousand bucks or, you know, and we have to accept that perhaps it could be more than that, especially if you have to start. Moving less words to find a doctor that would, would accept the responsibility. So. I don't have any concrete numbers for you unless you wanted to say, you know, let's stick to this number or whatever. But, you know, I think probably would depend more on, once we get somebody interested, what, what their.
Yeah, we, we couldn't, yeah, we couldn't do anything tonight since it's not part of the agenda. But yeah, I think that's good to have the heads up to say, hey, this could be coming.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not a, I hadn't put it in my, um, budget, you know, so I. I'm going to work under the assumption that, that we'll change medical directors before the end of this year and considering it's ten days old. But, um, but, uh, you know, so that could pop up and, you know, yeah, or at least spend a couple thousand. I don't think that'll. You know, ruin my budget all the way around, but it's a couple thousand dollars, so.
Ash, on that note, can we put this on our August agenda? So that we can talk about, you know, if we have a new guy coming in, two thousand dollars isn't all that much to ensure that we have a director and it's, you know, in our own. County. Can we put it on the agenda so we can at least talk about it, maybe come up with a number so Sean has something to go off of?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think two thousand dollars is.
Or do you ask, or do you ask the guy first?
Well, they, I, I mean.
Or do you ask me, or do we just throw that number to the guy? Whatever you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if we can approach him and be like, we're willing to pay, you know, two thousand. It might be a little more enticing for him to say, yeah, I would do it versus, hey, will you just be our medical director? And maybe if we have. Sean.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, this is yearly. It's not like we're asking for a lot and they are taking on a lot of liability.
I mean, if nothing else, like have a ceiling, you know, say, hey, you know, we have, um. You know, we're willing to pay and then, you know, see.
What is, what is, what does he come back with? Yeah, we don't want to, I personally, I don't want to throw out a number and, you know, say, you know, we could go up to four thousand.
I would at least like to have it on our agenda so we.
No, right, yeah.
Give him the authority to.
No. Even if we could see like comparable sized communities, what, what they pay.
I mean, he just said Carlisle pays what, two?
Two thousand, yeah, I'm increasing the service, yep. Yeah, and I can, I can, you know, there's some towns, uh, west of here that, you know, I can contact about what they're paying as well, though it may be, I mean.
Cause I'd really like to keep our director here.
Yeah, I mean, I would too. That, that would be ideal for, his name is Dr. Jones. Um. But they have to, you know, we, I talked to the, the Dr. Strayley, who does the Penory and us, and he's not interested. So, you know, I'd love to have a Guthrie County person or a Neder County person. Um, Dr. Pearson is the one in Neder County now. Um. But I can't force anybody. So.
I was just saying, maybe we have a little extra incentive.
Yeah. Yeah. Dr. Pearson?
Yeah, I can go ahead.
Yeah, bring him up. So, all right, any other questions on that, guys?
No, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thirteen, resolution number one, two, two, three, city relevant.
That's something.
There, this relates to any bond issues they have in the bond market. It doesn't relate to any private placement bank financings. There are two new material events that have to be disclosed and this just gets the city up to date. On those two new material events, number fifteen and sixteen on the material provided by Dorsey Whitney. Um, and we're responsible to update a website called HMO when those new material events take place. Such as when you do a local bank financing, you have to disclose that there's a new debt issued on the HMO website. And we're, we've been doing that and we'll continue to do so. That's it.
Okay, that's, I'm. Need a motion.
Someone's.
Second. Having the Patrick.
Yes.
Goley.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Renzler.
Yes.
Okay, fourteen, bar, the bond financing is up. Twenty-two, five, four, three, setting the date. August eight.
Second.
Patrick.
Yes.
Goley.
Yes.
Morgan. Calhoun.
Yes.
Yes.
If, if I can just briefly ask you, in your council packets on electronically, it's PDF page one hundred and seventy-seven of one hundred and ninety-two. Given that we have a new updated purchase cost for the tire truck, there are two different payment structures for that financing. Uh, one is a ten-year payment structure. And I, I, you might want to go through the sources and uses because it's, it's a little tedious. I can skip that if you want. The, the part, if you look at this page, the sources and uses page, look at the ten-year structure, that's on the PDF page one hundred and seventy-seven. So the principal amount of the financing is claimed to be two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Under, this is under sources. Cash on hand is reflected to be applied of seventy thousand from the fire department. We're estimating thirty thousand of proceeds from the sale of the two existing trucks. I think that's, uh, on the very conservative side. It should be more than that. Uh, Josh, you talked about one realign instead of two. That's expected to save five thousand off that cost. So that's included as another source or the cost reduction effectively. And then the purchase cost under uses that you locked in last month is three hundred and sixty thousand, eight sixty-three. There's an estimate, this is, this is subject to change, so just please keep that in mind. Estimate for the chassis cost increase of roughly five thousand from an inflationary standpoint. So that's what the size of, of financing looks like right now. I think that's, this is what we'll proceed with unless you're differently.
Is this what you recommend, Ash?
Yes.
And this is okay with you?
Yes.
So the ten-year structure or eleven-year, the ten-year, if you agree to that, that's put you on a ten-year replacement cycle. That has a debt levy impact of roughly, it's thirty-seven cents. If you look, look at the, uh, third page, the tax impact page, excuse me, forty cents. And then the eleven-year structure is a slightly higher than interest cost, roughly six thousand higher. That levy impacts is roughly thirty-seven cents. So you're saving around six thousand dollars on a levy impact difference of roughly three cents. And it's really entirely, fully council's decision how you want to proceed.
And the ten-year is not very much different from what the last truck payment was, was nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So it's roughly. It's cost gone up.
That's right.
That's, that's the only reason.
Good thing is your valuation's gone to two thousand, on a lower levy rate.
Is there a big difference on the levy rate from the last time you purchased one of those?
When the truck was purchased in two thousand and fourteen, the levy at that point, based on the old valuation at that point in time, fifty-one cents. This is still lower, certainly, which I want to go.
Not bad. Do we need to make a motion on which way it does?
If you would please.
Which, what do you recommend?
If, if you lean toward the, uh, ten-year rotation cycle, I'd do the ten-year. If you're completely focused on a lower levy, I'd do the eleven-year. It's, it's a, it's a judgment call.
I like the ten, just to keep it on the same rotation.
That's fine. It's not a big difference, but that's fine. It's good.
That's what's going to happen.
I can move.
I'm moving to make it a ten-year.
Renzler.
I'll second it.
Patrick.
Yes.
Goley.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Renzler.
Yes.
Okay, now we have to sell the body truck. The fire, what, do you have anything about fire?
Uh, we're gonna sell a couple of trucks, I guess. Uh, no, I will not feel comfortable speaking on that, so that would be.
I don't know why that's on here.
I just. So evidently.
Well, if Josh was supposed to be here, I think he, this should have been moved to the beginning of the meeting, given the fact that they have a fire meeting. So they, we need to wish that to the next month.
It's okay as long as you're fine with the conservative assumption that you've got thirty thousand proceeds from the two trucks.
So, yeah, that's.
And that's what Josh provided.
We just.
Yes, that's what he told me.
Okay, so then, okay.
No matter my guess, we had, we went and had other fire trucks up for sale and sell. Sell it until everything's, you got everything.
Right. Do we even need to worry about that right now or we're just?
Your size of financing now, so that's the, where it becomes a decision point, really, for the council? You're, you're making an assumption, so I think you kind of have to make an assumption. So. Or you wait until, to do the financing until later. Which I think you probably want to get wrapped up.
Go with that assumption that you have. I don't see why we need to.
I don't think so.
Okay, we'll go with that assumption that you have.
Ash, Josh is on his way.
We'll take two, couple minutes.
Sorry, Ash.
Taking his chance to sneak out.
Thank you.
Good as a candidate.
I hear it's really bad. I've not seen that period.
But they, so. I, I don't have no authority to say that. But I, I think that in reality, we're able to keep the cost as low as possible, but.
Lighter spots.
Yeah.
At a minimum. Hey, Josh.
I'm here.
Right.
They just questioned on the sale of the fire truck.
Yep. Thirty thousand for the sale of the two existing, that's what we've gotten there.
So like, when I talked to Chip there the other day for the sale of the fire trucks, um, that's quite the unknown. My personal feeling is we're gonna be going to a recession in the next couple of years, just kind of, well, I think if that's the case, is the department willing to pay, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars for the one truck, uh, the fifty five hundred? Which, speaking of which, the ninety four, it's actually ninety two at seven hundred. But, are they willing to pay that? I don't know. You look at some of the departments around that, that truck would greatly benefit and barely afford to put gas in their truck right now. So, um, the price of the sale would be thirty thousand, hopefully, well, I could almost guarantee thirty thousand between the two of them. Our last truck went to ski resort for like twelve thousand dollars, I believe, somewhere around there when we sold the seventy eight, so. There's always those recreational facilities that like those as well, so.
So we could get thirty thousand from both fire trucks?
You could get thirty thousand from the one.
Uh, yeah.
But we're, I think we're adding thirty thousand to being pretty.
It's a good conservative estimate.
Like, I talked to Chip, we wanted to be conservative on that number. We'd rather have our thousand dollars come down than go up. So, um, correct?
The decision point, though, we size the financing once and then it's done. So we can't like, it's not like a construction loan where you can draw on it later, but it's, it's the.
If it's more, I can add stuff to the truck and make it nicer, that's perfectly fine. Some of the stuff I did talk to Chip with as well, the truck that we, I signed the contract for, has two booster lines on each side. Um, if we delete one of those, that could offset the chassis increase as well, um, that.
I think that's.
Yes, it's got that factor in here.
So, um, there's a few other things that we could add, delete. I know, uh, you get a choice of three different paint schemes on it. I believe, uh, the red and white is a little more expensive than red and black or all red. So, I mean, I think there's some, some points in there that we could change in our final bill meeting to accommodate that two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
So the financing now is sized at two hundred and eighty five thousand.
Right, okay.
The hearings that cushioned about it not to exceed two ninety. So, do you want to do two ninety? And that'll give you five thousand contingency? Or you want to keep it at the two eighty five?
I think the two eighty five is fine. I mean, if, if we know that conservatively we're gonna get thirty thousand for the trucks, possibly more.
How do you feel?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say, you know, it's like, it depends on the dice on that.
So right now, just to kind of put in the reference, that two thousand and five truck that's on your guys' spreadsheet, some of them I've been seeing for sale right now, ranging right around that seventy five thousand dollar mark. But, we didn't want to say seventy five thousand dollars and then.
Right.
Not, not having enough.
Right, seventy five.
So, that's why we went with the thirty thousand combined.
Okay, so with that being said, we just need a motion to sell those when it comes to.
I had nothing to do with this.
I don't want to say it, I need to use online.
We're sizing the financing.
Just like to confirm thirty thousand that he has.
He's kind of wanting to know what our appetite is, do we want to stay at two eighty five?
So then what's the deal about, sale of fire trucks?
Not, just confirm to him that thirty thousand dollars he has is good.
Okay.
They say to charge to appreciate to him.
I mean, I just want to point out too on that, I don't, what Chip's announced publicly, correct? So, I mean, the, the tax levy.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
It's in the packet.
The tax levy within that has dropped down even though we're financing more money, so.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you guys looked at that, but that's always.
Yeah, I don't think they'd. Put it ten years instead of a.
That's always a good thing. Also, with that being said, um, your first out pumper can be no older than ten years old. So, um, if we stay on this sort of rotation, by the time that truck is due to replace, it could become a back at pumper and our twenty thirteen will then be twenty years old and have to be the truck to probably go down the road, sort of deal, so.
So enjoy.
Okay, fifteen, all tax labor, city finance service, while boss and city vice vice, Paul Shellaw.
Yes, while boss, I'm going to start working with us for a while, trying to do a school guitar. I'm explaining that from that, since an hour, while costs mixing, talent, circuit wins in. An hour, I'd like to see us in the reason that paid for both of us. How would you feel about giving them a dollar?
I think it is madness, y'all.
Yes, we're lucky to have both.
And we have to have Paul out there every Saturday to ensure we cannot have it open without somebody manning it.
How do you feel?
So go up to sixteen fifty one in ten and a quarter, is that right?
No.
Fourteen thirty one and ten and a quarter.
Thirteen thirty one.
Oh, thirteen, okay, sorry.
And Paul is making nine point twenty five.
So that to ten and a quarter?
So we can, instead of a dollar, we can do each other.
How many hours do they? Do you know what we're saying about it?
Ninety two, but with all the ice trees, I'm assuming that he's gonna be out there longer in colder weather helping people out. I mean, or, seems like the limbs are coming down, the leaves are longer in the year, you need somebody out there to brush pot. It isn't that much money, just like I say, only on Saturdays. Sometimes when you get real busy, Jim will say, well, can you work on the Sunday or extend your hours?
So.
I don't know, you know, James, see, the VNR was involved. People used to out there, anytime they wanted to dump stuff while there's glass and paint and all that, they shut us down unless we have a man. So, person has to physically be there.
I'll make that motion.
And move back to Patrick. Second by Morgan, how do you go?
Patrick? Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ranzol?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixteen, Katie?
Um, I also, so, I know, I, I kind of see you about, that letter is basically talking about the police attorney programs. And this, this is just kind of an update of everything I've done this year, of what the community program is, what it actually is, is it encompasses so much more than just summer youth programs, it is my books and badges, it is, I'm cleaning the actual night out, all the other little things I do, it also talks about, and I guess maybe copy, I can walk and talk. It talks about, um, how I kind of got the funding. So, as we started this program, this is a, no, this is what I'm, this is explaining everything I've done this year, what the program actually is. Um, and how I kind of got the funding, so, I guess before we get into what's on agenda, it's just kind of explaining. Started like the Sagetti Supper, which is actually gonna be like my annual fundraiser in February, that's how I started raising money for this, kind of, these programs that I kind of envisioned. We got a very nice donation from United Press, they do something called Local Love, they've given to other programs in our local area. I actually just kind of posted today about, I got a twenty five hundred dollar grant from Humanizing the Badge. Uh, that is a national police officer organization, which is basically exactly what it's called, it's to build community police relationships. So that kind of explains, how did I take, you know, almost two hundred kids to four camps for ten dollars a kid? This is how I do that. Books and badges, I started that in two thousand and nineteen. I started with maybe six to eight kids at a meeting, or in a venue, the library, I hold it with Lisa. I got a self-funded at that point. Um, I had sixty five people in my event last month. Um, between stu-, you know, kids and parents, um, we have volunteers now that come from PALS, and PALS is actually helping me to start fund that. So that's kind of how these programs become. Um, that's kind of, I guess, what I'm hoping to make my footprint, kind of my side project, besides doing very regular police work. Um, so I just kind of want to explain really what community programs encompasses, it's not one thing. It's not for one group of, or people. And then, I guess finally, is yes, I continue to work year up for year four at Weston Hill Valley. Um, that is a secondary job, I know we, the older council members understand that, for the new ones, that is a second job for me, I work my days off as a school. So, but that program is really starting to overlay with my city job, you know, the kids I see, when I'm on the city, you know, other officers, other departments from the other communities, you know, those kids, I absolutely do. And those things are really starting to help and build those relationships, so hopefully we keep them out of our general system, is one of the goals. So, that's kind of what I do. And then, I guess, because they don't have any.
Take it through me. Uh, the whole reason we have it on the agenda is, uh, Katie has collected some money from that money. She would like to get that money and go on her own, self-funded with that. Consulting was our, our, if you're going to the council, I'll move that, so she can take the money she collected.
So you had some fundraising money, you put it in the police account from what I'm seeing here.
And basically it all, we don't have a special line item for any of our programs, so it all just kind of goes in those big police department, correct, Ash? So I, at any given time, have to tell you exactly how much it is, because you got the same thing with your county program or your own program.
You created a nonprofit, or somebody created, it was set up, and you just want to move those funds into that?
Yeah, I, I think it'll actually benefit more, I kind of, I hope my letter explained it is, um, it's gonna open up a lot more grant opportunities for me, donations, kind of, and also, um, you know, when I, when I go, I can't just go to Sarah and say, hey, I need a check for the zoo right now, it takes time. This is kind of gonna help expedite our process, to kind of pay for all that stuff.
And it's kind of a little bit of a, anyway, so that's a good idea to do it, and thank you for doing that, so that's.
I'll, I'll definitely thank my lawyer friends for their help.
So we would have a motion, lots of. Yeah, we'll have a motion moved by Calvo.
Hold on a minute.
For that program and give it to Katie to go on her own, for that program.
Okay, so how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Katie, for you, thank you, Mr. Marley and your wife for helping out.
Okay, seventeen, person's not, I actually talked to my brother-in-law about wanting to be on the historic preservation committee. A N L O A, Goldstone, Goldstone. And you were part of twenty people stepping up and wanting to fill these positions, I recommend if the council makes a motion that puts this person on the historic preservation.
So, I, I just want to say, I know, uh, I, I thank you for, you know, being there, making these appointments. I, I know we need to also really consider what our attorneys can do when appointments are made, so. And Loa Goldstone, is that it?
Yeah.
And they're from here in town, of course, right?
About it, well, it looks like Longbow.
Is it Longbow? Are they, they're new to town?
Yeah.
Okay.
And she's been, I mean, you can see she's been of the budgeting.
Yeah, you can see that she's snogged her and.
My brother is, does a lot of history and had a long visit with her. I think she'd be a real asset to this kind of.
How many members do they have right now?
Like I say, few and far between.
Yeah, that's.
I think of two or three dusty and bender on it, the city workers, and they dropped out, and so I could say it's hard to fill these positions.
We need a appointment and move to Morgan.
Hold on a second.
Yeah. So how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Ranzol?
Yes.
Okay, on the next item eighteen, I just want to let the council know that this has been turned over to lawyers.
Well, there, I think there's a little more to it, so it, that, I would like to make a motion to move into a closed session to discuss this.
But, Ash, what was you saying, if we move in closed session, the camera will be shut off, but everything will be recorded, and it still could go into litigation, whatever we say.
It could.
And that's why I said, I, I'm recommending let the lawyers handle it, but.
I think there's more, I think there's more to it.
There's, there's a motion, and the council has to take a vote, whether we go on a closed session, if it doesn't pass, then it's just, the lawyers can take over. Um, with, Ash and I have had a lot of cases over the years, our past police chief and different, we've turned over to lawyers, the lawyers handled everything, and the council is not involved, just illegal.
More to this, so again, I would make the motion to move into a closed session.
So the lawyers still looking at this?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's gonna turn over to them.
But there's, there's more, there's more to it that needs to be discussed, so. I'm asking that we make that motion, or that I make that motion.
There was a motion, is there a second?
I would just like to say that the item on here says that discuss with council. Who's our council that's gonna be discussing this? Because I didn't think a member could move it, it had to be somebody else moving to go to a closed session.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda three months ago when we had this issue, before the letter was sent. I just asked Ash to put it on there. Why the wording is the way it is, I have no idea. But, I asked before it even got to a lawyer to be put on there as a closed session, because I think it's something we need to discuss, and there's more pieces to it that need to be discussed, so we don't put our city at risk even more, that we move into a closed session so we can discuss those items.
And I understand that, and I, and I agree with you, I think we should have been done way before this got to this point. Uh, the only thing is, is I don't see council here to discuss it. Again, my understanding, I could be wrong, I don't know if you know anything about it, Warren, since you're an attorney. Uh, I, I don't believe, my understanding is that a council person can ask for this to go, go into closed session, it has to be the person that it's about has to ask it to go into closed session. That's all I'm saying, I agree with you.
But when we went into closed session the last time, we did have secret here because we were discussing a matter with the city. This is with the city, we have every right to move into a closed session, as long as we have a two-thirds vote to move into a closed session.
I have no idea what the topic is.
Yeah.
I would just say, I wouldn't go into closed session unless you had an attorney here.
Well, and I've asked for three months, why is the attorney not here then? If that's the procedure, why are they not here? Because, this is what I'm getting at, for three months, I've been asking for this situation at hand to be taken care of.
You be covered in all the communication.
And I've asked Ash for you to have this on the agenda so we can discuss it, so why, why is the attorney not here then?
Which I told.
Well, you say we have an attorney, why, why is she not here?
Well, I.
But I've been asking for three months for this to get taken care of.
We have.
We have a complaint.
We have.
And this goes a lot higher than you, so this needs to be dealt with.
And I have give it to the attorneys and the attorneys communication with me.
We have a special meeting, because we had to have somebody stay, but this isn't urgent, this isn't as urgent? We have to have an employee stay, and we need to give him a salary increase, and we have to have a meeting like that. I've been asking for three months to get this situation taken care of, and we're still playing games with words on agendas because we can't get it taken care of.
And, and I totally agree with you on that, Christine.
It's so frustrating.
We should have that, I am just, and it's, it's nothing.
No, I get what you're saying, but I'm, I'm asked.
Hey, that's one at a time talk, and you need to calm down, Christine.
I just, I want to be sure that it's right, I don't know, I, I know you did put this on the agenda, okay, I know you did do that, and you, you don't call the attorneys, they haven't go up, but since it says we need to, we were discussing with council, I, I really think we should have to have them here, and it is frustrating, I'm in the same boat. Why did we go three months, you know? Even, even if it's still going to be handled by that, I think we need to have that attorney here in front of the council so we know what's going on. More than just emails, you know, so if we have any further questions.
And the nonexistence of emails.
Yeah, yeah, so, I do agree with you, I just, I don't know if we need to.
Well, I would ask that on our next meeting in August, to have the council here or on phone, so we can go into a public or a closed session, and we can discuss this.
I don't, I think in my opinion, I'm not gonna disagree with you guys, but in my opinion, I don't think this is for us. I think, I think this is.
Then how?
No, let me finish, please. Um, I think it's for Ash, he's our city administrator. I think he needs to, he is doing his job. I say he takes care of it. We're here for.
We're here for policies, procedures, we're not here for, uh, personnel issues.
So, the problem I have with this situation is that there's allegations that have been made, particular allegations that were, were supposed to be taken care of and discussed with certain individuals, so that things were prevented from happening, and those things are still happening. And if we're asking Ash to tell the attorney, how do we know the attorney is getting told? Because, we got the email, which is what I've been asking for, for three months, for the same thing to be I know, but I've been asking you for three months to have that done.
I hope so.
No, but I've been asking for this to be taken care of, because it's not a council thing to deal with, it's something for you to deal with.
It has been taken care of.
But we, but you should be talking to the people that are being affected, and they should feel like something is being done, and
They've been looking, they've been getting along.
But that's not the case, Ash.
Has anybody been coming to your office, Ash?
No.
And asking for help and saying, here's my problem?
No.
I think those individuals are coming to the council and not into your office, which is
But they're not, they, did, have you not talked to this specific individual? Did you have a meeting with this specific individual?
We had, we had a meeting, and we did, said we need a letter in writing, we got a letter in writing, and Ash and I turned it over to the lawyer, and they turned it over to another lawyer, and we said, that's it. I, I, Ash and I have done this numerous times, and we turn it over to the lawyers, we're not lawyers, we don't handle this.
This is not the first time that he was stuck like that.
But why are the situations still occurring? That's what I want to know.
I never heard this.
You have, Ash, I have told you multiple times.
I, I, and I understand
It's fine, it's gonna play out, I get the legal system, I know how it plays out, it can, it can play out, but I'm just, I'm trying to prevent a lot of stuff from happening, and it's not getting prevented, so it is what it is. I'm done.
Okay, no more discussion on this thing? Okay, we'll go to the public forum.
It's leaving. Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to, uh, maybe recommend, and, uh, just probably a Dave thing, or a D O T thing, or I'm not sure, but I think we should move the thirty-five mile per hour sign, like, a block closer to the school, now that we have houses and stuff there, when you're coming um, westbound on White Pole Road, so it's, it's all the way past the new houses right there, right across the street from the
It drops at the vet clinic?
The vet clinic, yeah, so like moving out by, like, oh, you know, right at the edge of the line for the school, so that, you know, since that's residential area now, um, that it reflects that, just
Shane, can you refer that to Dave and Jill?
I just think that every time I'm coming in town, you know, at some point, there's gonna be fences and kids up and
Like, road out there eventually through
Right, yeah, so, cause that, yeah, just on the east of Foley there, um, you know, just let there slow now by the time they get to that intersection, so.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, Ryan.
January, a few things, um. So, we've been working on the, uh, new resident packets, those, we've set a hard deadline of having those ready by Scoop the Loop, August twenty-seventh, so, um, we plan on having a booth set up to start handing those out, talking to new residents. Uh, the Scoops ribbon, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony is Saturday, July thirtieth, at eleven A M. They're planning a whole event around that. Um, R B T V, um, the chamber has motioned to approve a ten thousand dollar contribution towards the, uh, the costs of that, um, event. Uh, we'd like the city to consider a contribution as well. Um, also, hopefully for the next, uh, meet, uh, your next meeting, um, consider approval for the street closures between North Gaines and Division, and Division and Fremont, um, for the event. We went to Woodbine on a recent Main Street visit. Uh, Woodbine has had huge success with their, with their, uh, Main Street program, so we're still moving forward with that. They talked about the huge benefits the program has done for them over the sixteen years they've been a Main Street program. They've increased their downtown taxable property value by two point nine million, opened numerous new businesses, have had numerous inquiries for storefronts that they can't fill because they're full. Um, they partnered with the school, state to build a fifteen million dollar regional recreational facility that has, uh, more than exceeded their expectations for memberships and stuff, and they're not a community much different than I am, so. Um, there was a lot of success with their program, so we're hoping that that would be as beneficial for us as well. So, that's pretty much all.
Ryan, just a question, you talked about a possible contribution from the city for this R B T V.
Yeah.
Did you, did you have anything in mind, or?
Uh, I can get more information on that for the next meeting, uh, we're in the process of putting together the budget still, we have a rough idea of what it's gonna take, um, but, you know, we're not sure exactly where our fundraising goals will be as well, so.
All right, perfect.
Shouldn't be too, too high, but.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
I have, all right. I want to welcome Sarah, I should have done that at the beginning of the meeting. Sarah is here, welcome today, uh, Sarah is gonna step up and take Mike's position. Mike has left us to the county job, and we're proposing for, to fill in Sarah's position, the building clerk. Sarah's gonna step up to the building clerk instead of one, so, I'm sorry, I should have done that at the beginning of the meeting, so it would be strange. Sarah will be doing a good job, she's been trained on doing Mike's job, and she is a little bit more trained, and she will get it by the time go by.
Very important, that position.
We will post it this week.
So, just a question on this, and I, and I hate to bring it up all the time, you know, and it's because I, I, I just, I don't want to do something that's gonna put us at risk, when somebody gets promoted for a thing, for an open position, doesn't that have to be posted to satisfy that ten day, uh, veterans preference?
Well, more thing was in the department, that's a real, we, um, all we do, we say, because you manage evil before and you know, you're
Right.
Well, you guys doing, you're making supervisor.
Right.
So, maybe doesn't need to advertise, we're not supervising.
And, but we're taking away her duties, her previous duties, right?
Uh, not really, what you do here is all combined, because you see one job description to all of it. This is just definitely a unique situation here because of the designation that we have to have. You can't assign one of them should do from A to Z things, so she will be doing what Mike is doing, last training, the person who's doing the building clerk, was helping with the evil at the counter, so it's kind of, uh, maybe you see one job description for all of them at the city hall, unique little bit. Sarah can describe the particular, because she does
So basically, anybody up in city hall can do every single job?
Yes.
But there's no job descriptions?
There is no job description.
But there's not, because we've never seen them, we've asked for them, but we've never seen them.
Right, but, but in our handbook, you're supposed to have job descriptions.
Running for the auditors, every month, or every year, we get deemed for not having job descriptions.
So, I think maybe that would be something we need to look at also, because that
We have
Again, I just don't want to do something that puts you at risk.
I can show it to you right now.
I would like to have them printed, maybe.
I can print it to you right now, can take a moment.
We can email them, I can read them off
Sure. So, is there, there is a short description to every department, to every, uh, employee, we have just that staff established like ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, with the change of the council members, all the staff, we get this all the time, that, oh, we don't see job description, because if you ask me, I'll send it to you. Uh, have we asked?
I don't want to get in a big debate, I know, I know that's been asked
That's good, he said he's gonna email them to us, so he can email them.
And it, it kind of goes back to when I talked about our, our, uh, complaint process. So I went through this whole thing, couple meetings, you know, blah, 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 here's a forum, blah, 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 and then come to find out we have it. If I'd just been told we had it at the beginning, it would have satisfied I think, so, I think more of that needs to be done. Uh, just we asked for something, and we got it, just give it out, so. All right, cool.
I, I have one thing, um, a while back, I, I can't remember when, but I think the previous council or something, you guys talked about low lying trees that would hit the fire trucks, ambulances and stuff like that? Is that something that we just put in the paper, just to refresh people's memory about?
They, they did last time, the police officers went around the pole.
We still have those
It all, turns around, and
I, I see a lot of hanging down, I mean, hanging down, but I didn't know if that was just in the paper, kind of, you know?
Mate, Ryan, is that part of what you can put in your packet, your welcome packet? Now, did you work with the city on, like, two bag limit on trash and everything, is that?
Uh, we're not done putting everything together, but, uh
Because I know a lot of people up in new housing, we didn't realize that you have a compost area, the two bag limit, different thing like that.
It's Scott, he actually paying attention and marking people down toward I, I drive down the streets and I see bags on, bags.
Sarah's got a whole list, two bags, if not, they, they get killed for
People have cardboard boxes laying all over the place.
Or people get tags, if there's a toilet center or a couch, I'll remind them, come up city hall, a lot of people go get stickers for the toilet, because Scott does not pick that up unless there's tags on it.
Well, I'm talking about just the excess trash.
Yeah, they don't, they don't extra.
Yeah, we can get all that in, we'll stop them.
So who takes care of the trees, when they start to get bad, who notices them? Is that something that, uh, Max does?
No, we don't want that, no, that's, that's something where
Like every owner is responsible for themselves.
Let's possibly just put a thing in the next utility bill, the height on the sidewalk, height for the street, and go from there, but last time, the police went around Mark the Wall and told people, and
Yeah.
Then, I mean, Jim and Cory and Stephen have so many ash trees to take care of, that, you know, that them, the utilities, maybe they can help out.
Maybe use a friendly reminder, because I know there's a lot of them starting to get bad again.
Okay, do you have a comment, anything? Council?
There we go. Two hours, Sarah, I'll see.